And town could. With the town charter and state statutes relative to the public notice, public access posting with the town clerk, all prior to that initial public hearing. Those were required in our town charter and by state statutes, and that didn't happen. This document wasn't created. That wasn't created, but it wasn't shared with town clerk, therefore wasn't available to the public. This was brought to the attention of the selectmen. It was brought up during the public hearing. It was brought up after the public hearing. It was brought up at the town meeting, and then again, after the town. This now becomes a civil rights case as the majority of the town has not had the opportunity to fully view the entire budget prior to the initial public hearing or through the process. Town charter and state statutes specifically require that the operating budget for both the town and the schools be presented together with the revenue estimates so that citizens can review it in its totality, discuss it, and participate fully informed prior to that initial public hearing and through the rest of the process. And the citizens of this town have been deprived of that right. By disenfranchising all but a select minority of voters to access to this material, even after the issue was raised in early March, the town is now knowingly violating the civil rights of all voters in the community. And I believe that stems from initially some of the confusion about how all this is structured. Thank you.
Cynthia, is there any other public comment?
I hope that for.
Who are you?
Twenty seven and a half week we have known. I hope that a majority of the members of this Board of Finance turned into watchdogs for process. Because the only thing we have, Brad brings up, and I'm embarrassed that I didn't know, I didn't see this after being in this budget process for thirty five years. All we have is the process to protect us, and it protects Democrats and perhaps Republicans, and it protects progressives and protects conservatives. And I hope that you can, as a board, adhere to things. You know, it was, it was ten years ago, right now, that all are non-passed, all are non-passed because of citizens complaining. All or none wouldn't have passed at the town meeting. No, if all or none has. The, the town attorney changed the call of the meeting. The word urgent compelled became recommend. And we were, it's, I'm saying the process was violated. How, we, we petitioned for a special town meeting according to the charter. And then when we get to the meeting, the wording of the call of the meeting is changed, and we had to undo that there. You may remember in two thousand sixteen, I think it was, when we had the aquarium battle. You had public, you, it was by state statute. You have to have two public hearings on that, notified. It's really strict trying to sell a water, a public water supply. We brought that up, and then a, a second public hearing was put together. But if the citizenry didn't, oh, didn't raise their voices to it. So all I'm saying is process. I mean, the, the, and, and this never became an ordinance. We, we followed everything in the charter that redeemed this to be an ordinance. So the process protects us, and I said, like I said, I think what Brad has brought up is, is, it's got a lot of gravity. And I, I would hope that four of the seven become real, like warriors for, for adherence to process. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there any other public comments? Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see Nancy.
Unmute, unmute yourself. There you go.
Yep, I got it. I'll unraise my hand too at some point. There we go. Thank you all for the opportunity to speak tonight. I would just like to say that with our referendum starting tomorrow morning at six AM, that I hope we do get a lot of people out to vote because this is part of the process for the town. Notices were sent, et cetera. And so I do hope we get a good turnout, and I do hope that, and I expect that our Board of Finance will help support the budget as presented. This is a budget that you all spent a lot of time working on, along with pretty much every department had, you know, presenting as usual their, their budgets and talking back and forth about what might be able to be, savings might happen, et cetera. And so now we have a budget to put forward to the public, and it gets up to us to, to all of us in the town. It would be nice if we got a hundred percent turnout, but fortunately that hasn't happened in quite a while to support the different departments that have put together their budgets, not on a whim, but by spending the entire year checking their expenses, checking income, things like that, and then putting something together that's doable for the entire town to work with. I would hate to see any further cuts have to happen because that means certain departments would do with less, and I don't really want to see that happen. So I would expect again, support from, from all of you present here on the Board of Finance, et cetera, to get this budget passed the first time around. Thank you.
Thanks. Nancy, what's your address?
Oops. A second. Twenty five Walnut Hill Road. Sorry, I forgot to do that part.
Well, that's okay.
Yes, sir.
I'm Stanley Kessler, twenty two Spring Hill Lane. And Nancy, you've put everything very, very well. I can only, you know, just support exactly what you said, that a very fiscally prudent budget was put together by a bipartisan finance committee, and I hope that it's supported by the town. Thank you.
Thanks. Is there anyone up on the Zoom with their hand up? Okay, so let's go to the next thing is correspondence. I'm not quite sure. There were, there was a lot of back and forth, and I, and I guess this, I asked for this to be put in the meeting, but it's kind of moot. But if you want to read these email threads for entertainment purposes, you know, there's a lot there. I was just trying to, I misjudged the timeframe of the twenty four hours. I, I didn't count Good Friday as a holiday, even though it was a holiday. And I kind of knew that, but I forgot. So anyway, but this is still in correspondence, right? Yeah. All right. So we won't read that now. The approval of the minutes. What I would like to do is do these separately, do the two February twenty second ones first, and then do the March twenty fourth. So do I have a motion to accept or approve the minutes for the special meeting on Tuesday, February twenty second? If y'all have been looking through it, or if you want to.
About six forty five.
Well, the, the, both of them. There's a seven, yeah, the two, the, yes, the two, February twenty second.
You're gonna do them as one?
Yeah, and then do the March twenty fourth separately. So then I'll say the two meetings, two special meetings, Tuesday, February twenty second. Okay, any discussion?
Now, I have a couple of questions. I, I'm just curious. Why were the two forms for the, the year twenty second, six forty five meeting? Well, one was filed on the twenty third, three seventeen, one was filed on the twenty fourth at four fifty six. I wasn't sure if there was a change or.
I have a faint recollection that we had a fifteen minute meeting, but I literally.
No, I think Bob's, I think you're wondering why it was, it was two different dates. Six forty five. I'm not, yeah, not.
Right. I hear you saying, yeah, this was this is seven o'clock.
So it was.
Held him up to the light. I love Bobby. Look, if it's just, we got filed twice.
Yeah, it must have just filed once, but I don't know why, why it would get stamped twice. I can check, I can follow up with the town clerk and see. Yeah.
But were there two meetings?
No, it's the same meeting.
Okay.
It's just the six forty five, the six weeks.
Right. Well, I mean, there's a six forty five, and there was a seven o'clock.
I don't have one saying it was registered twice with the town. Two different time steps.
So it must have just been.
I don't even have the one that says.
It would have been done in the town clerk's office, and I can find out.
Yeah, I don't have the top sheet that says six forty five.
There's one that. One was filed on the twenty third at three seventeen, and one was filed on February twenty fourth at four fifty six.
Yeah, but that wasn't what I gave you. You painted.
You printed that one from the, from the minutes when it was first getting.
So that's, yeah, so y'all don't have that, is I think.
I only have this for twenty second, and I have.
You printed yours.
Here. Was it all in one package for you?
Yeah, I held it up and did a look.
Yeah, I have it all here.
I, I feel as if my question is pretty satisfactory. You got an answer? I didn't.
No, I just didn't get this top sheet of the six forty five hybrid need, so I'm just, it's just one page. I just quickly.
Again, Bob, when Deanne sent it out, a couple of days after the meeting, he saw the, the, the different time, and then the one that Deanne, I'm sorry.
It's posted on the website twice. So it was recorded twice by the town clerk. Why? We don't know at this point. If Deanne's gonna follow.
Okay, this is one of the.
They're trying to just give a quick look. It doesn't, it seems to be.
The substance, yeah, the main thing is the forty five thousand dollars that was approved. So there's nothing changed there. I think it was just filed in second.
Yeah, yeah, that was it. I just wanted to see that. Okay.
The other motion, do we get second?
We have a second. You're the second. We've been discussing, and now we're gonna vote as a block.
Okay, I'm sorry. Who made the motion? Second.
Cynthia made the motion. I seconded.
Thank you.
What happens if somebody might have questions on the seventh?
Well, let's go. Discussion time.
I, I believe there might be a couple of bits that we have to address on page five, is why I first want.
We just do these as two separate.
Okay, no problem. Yeah, no problem.
So let's do the six forty five and vote on that.
Okay, so can we just remake the motion? We have to amend it.
And I amend the second. Okay.
Okay, are we gonna vote on the amended motion, or are we just gonna have a new motion to approve the six forty five?
Cindy, make the new motion, and I'll.
Okay, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the six forty five meeting that took place on February twenty second.
And I'll second this.
Good. All right, discussion. Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed? Okay.
I'll make a motion to accept this February twenty second, seven o'clock meeting.
Okay, is there a second? All right, questions?
Yeah, I, I'm page five. There's Department three sixty. That should be police, I believe, not fleet maintenance.
Yeah, three sixty is police.
And the board for the identification, I believe, is supposed to be five million, four hundred and twelve thousand, one sixty eight.
There was a reduction to it, so it should be lower. Police at the end of the day came in at five million, three nine six.
Should I give a break? I'm sure.
I'm just, sorry, I mostly kind of talked to myself a second by. So it looks, the final number for the police was five million, three nine six one six eight, I believe.
But this was before.
But this, it was done in two beats, as it was seventy two hundred dollars lower initially, and then seventy, seventy two hundred increase later.
Just someone who's trying to track periods, I believe, the board of selectmen, I'm just right. It's coming out at the twenty second.
Yeah.
I thought it was five, five million, four twelve, one sixty eight.
Right, and then all that other stuff happened March twenty fourth, so these minutes would have.
Back to.
All right.
You may just verify it afterwards. I have one other similar kind of question on page six, Department three ninety. We were, that's recommendation, six million, two sixty four. Yeah, I don't know if you want to wait.
So six two six four zero zero six.
Yeah, what is the? Two, six million, two sixty one, nine zero six. Or select. Six two sixty four, zero zero six.
Yeah, because you would have added the money back when you added the police officer.
Okay, so let me make a motion to accept as amended.
Yes, sir.
Can we, can we look, when, when they made the motion to reduce the fleet, excuse me, the building maintenance account? And then, Mr. Ellis, and then the motion is fifty thousand dollars. So there's a four sixty account on the bottom of page five. Wasn't it forty seven thousand dollars? Not that reason, three thousand dollars difference. Does anybody have a record of that?
The initial. So the Board of Selectmen has taken out from the four sixty, I think, right? All right, so this says, is the request was four ninety seven, Board of Selectmen, this is four ninety seven.
I thought, thanks, without sixty.
The request was four ninety seven.
Yeah, so what did the Board of Selectmen make it?
Sixteen.
The Board of Selectmen.
No, they didn't, you're right, they didn't touch the four sixty account. We're talking. Four sixty account they didn't touch, and then initially you guys reduced it by the twenty five.
Twenty five.
And then later you reduced it by the other.
Twenty two, whatever that would make it.
That's the March meeting.
Yes.
I don't think it really matters, but yeah, I believe the initial motion is forty seven thousand, not fifty. Are you looking at the February twenty second or the March? I'm looking at the February. Seven o'clock twenty second. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
February twenty second, I'm going to give you the motion for forty seven thousand. Not that significant difference, but well, that was what I recall the motion being.
I'll check tomorrow.
But I have no problem with it.
Okay, so is Brad, do you know, do you have access to that number? Do you know what it was?
Because it wasn't what it was actually approved, I wouldn't scrap that.
I can follow up tomorrow.
Okay.
I'll make the, yeah, just make, make a motion to vote on the amended.
Okay, and then, you know, if it's different, you'll change it.
But what's that gonna do with the dollar amount?
It's, it leaves it a little bit.
It didn't change anything at the end. It just was.
Right.
Still changing.
So it's the same amount, yeah, it's not coming out or throwing into an account, so.
Okay.
It's not as great. Anyone else have any discussion on the minutes? Okay, um, we have a motion to approve the minutes from the February twenty second special meeting at seven o'clock as amended. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed? So now, um, we're going to go to the March twenty fourth meeting. Aside from what Mr. Cole said in public input, we also got some communication from him. I know I did. I got a lot of communications. And if, if in fact, and I asked Marty about this. You know, I, let's make a motion to approve it, and then I'll tell you what I'm gonna tell you.
I'd make a motion to accept the twenty four, uh, March twenty fourth.
Actually, no, hold on one second. I don't know if I should make this point first. I wa, I actually want to table this because it's incomplete. Marty doesn't know if you can amend minutes after you've approved them. So meaning if more information came, that was part of the minutes. So, you know what I'm saying? I'm not, I'm trying to understand whether I need to make a motion to table it or approve it. But we, but Marty is gonna get back to me on whether you can add things to an approved minutes.
Oh, then you're afraid that you want to add things. You want to shut it off. So you just, so, so don't, don't, nobody make a motion. Just let this table, just let this ride, and every time a meeting comes up.
Okay, I'm gonna put this on the next.
Make a motion to approve those minutes.
Right, but shouldn't.
So there's no action on that.
Okay, I'll take your word for it, so.
If, if we don't make a motion to approve it, it's not approved until.
Okay, we're gonna do it next time. Very good. So that's obvious. All right, so next. Now we've got the one, two, three, four considerations. So, so I have a motion to consider IT upgrades for the Buffle Fire Department, Stony Hill, recommended by the Board of Selectmen not to exceed twenty two thousand dollars.
I'd make a motion and accept the twenty two, two, not to exceed Stony Hill IT upgrades. I'll second that.
Okay, discussion.
And can I just tell you something real quick?
Sure.
So instead of printing, instead of just wasting the paper and printing everything over again, the final numbers on the, on the second sheet, on the backside of the page, the very last two numbers, those need to be switched. The number that shows the discounts is actually higher than, yeah, you just need to switch those. They were switched everywhere else. But instead of reprinting all of this, I was just gonna let you know in the meeting that that's, that that just needs.
But the dollar numbers, twenty two, two.
The dollars, the dollar numbers are the same. They just need to be switched in that one, one slot, very last.
We have a motion in the second.
Yeah. Yes.
Okay. You know, this is a lot getting at, at two forty in the afternoon. You know, there's no way I can read all this.
It was all put on, on the Zoom link, and that was included in the email I sent to you on April eighth.
This was all in April eighth?
Yes.
No changes or anything?
No, except for that, that I just told you, and that was all updated earlier today, like to this morning.
Thank you.
No.
It's late. I'm probably just not following, but I look, it's the back of this.
Yes.
Right.
Is it, is it right on the back? Okay, all right, then don't worry about it.
The four discount numbers higher.
And chairman. This was also approved by the fire commission.
Right, and it was approved by the Board of Selectmen too, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Is there any more discussion?
Wherever you want, but that was.
Isn't it tagged for C N R?
The only one that was tagged is the last one.
I make the motion to accept it, to, to make the purchase coming out of C N R account.
Second.
So somebody gonna second that?
I'll second.
I think John's on his cell phone.
Okay, so any more discussion? Should we vote on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed? Next. I have a motion for consideration on Havens Mount Docking Station for a double fire department, Stony Hill, is recommended by the Board of Selectmen not to exceed fourteen thousand, four hundred dollars.
I'd make a motion for the fourteen four, for the docking stations that come out of C N R account.
Okay, so you're changing the motion to come out of the C N R?
Yeah, wasn't this coming out? Well, where else would it come from?
The board needs the vote on where you want money to come from.
Right, so, okay, so that's the motion to come out of C N R. Do we have a second for that? I'll second it. Okay, great, discussion.
So guys are here. What are the docking stations, or is this for iPads or something?
The docking stations are for the iPads and fire apparatus for both, you know. And it's, it doesn't just, it's not just a docking station to hold the iPad. It's also a charging station. It's wired into the rig.
How many are with this big? Maybe it's here, but I'm not seeing it. How many dockings stations?
It's a twelve total.
Okay.
I believe it's six and six. We're matching up to one that we currently have at Buffle Fire in, in the USP Center, actually, we have sort of all the stations and all the iPads are the same for both departments, so everybody can get in any rig, and they should be able to use those iPads.
Is that a new idea between you guys?
It's good. I mean, I, I like.
Try and work together. You get the same layer model.
I love that. I love it when the fire departments work together.
I'm just trying to figure out the math. The, the, the agenda, Board of Selectmen minutes, fourteen thousand, four hundred, twelve units. I do math, and that's twelve hundred per. But the sheet that we have says three hundred, roughly three hundred and thirty five dollars each.
Right.
And the price include, the price includes the installation, and each rig, unfortunately, is different. We literally took pictures of each rig inside so that the gentleman can figure out where he's gonna mount them, and that that's the price.
So it itches.
So this is, this is the high end. Hopefully, we won't get to the high end, because some should be lower, but some may be right there.
So it's ten thousand dollars of installation.
Yeah, absolutely, that's.
Okay.
Hopefully, it'll be a little lower.
We did not good see.
I'm not busy Saturday.
But I want to understand something, so.
I'm special. A lot of people say that.
We are special. We cannot take this three, three, four, eighty eight and multiply by twelve, because they don't, they cost, they're, they vary in their costs.
Well, no, they cost. It's the installation.
It's the installations.
It could be more.
So that's why we included.
Intricate, depending, something.
That's correct.
They're not all the same.
That's when, like I said, we had to take pictures of each, of every rigs dash inside, so the gentleman's gonna install and figure out on where they're actually gonna go. And then, yeah, includes the wiring for their run. So if you wanted less wiring, you want more wiring, it all costs money.
Order on yourself.
Do you have?
Sorry, I didn't hear anything that just happened down the side.
She was using a calculator, and it's four thousand, twenty dollars for the equipment, and I wiped my fingerprints off her phone. I'm just making sure.
He said the high end would be twelve hundred each. But like I said, hopefully, we're gonna be lower than that, so we shouldn't exceed that.
And that was with.
That's why that's the price. That's what the installation.
And what does installation mean? What is that in town? Is it?
They have to install them on each, each fire apparatus.
To wire it to what?
Well, you have to find, it goes in the fire power source, if finding the grounding source. Wiring it from the, the battery block up to where you're going to mount it, actually finding a place to mount it where it's going to be safe to the officer and the driver of the truck, where it's gonna be visible to, to them. So there's a lot to take into consideration based on the design of the dash of each fire truck.
So those are tools that when you, the officer goes into that, while the chauffeur is driving, and can find street address, hydrant locations, the nearest hydrants, where the secondary hydrant is. You know, because if you get there and the hydrant's out of service, hopefully, it shouldn't be this, you know, hard look on them. You know, you can find a secondary hydrant rather quickly. And it also has a lot of stuff in there for like a fatal hazards, materials incident, even when they're involved, certain things to identify products, things like that.
But, but installation itself, which sounds like it's the most expensive part of this, is just physically like finding a space for it and.
Absolutely.
Power source. And is there only one vendor who does this, or are there multiple vendors?
There's, there's a couple that we talked to, but this, this gentleman is the one that really got back to us on it, so.
It, it does sound kind, kind of high. I mean, it's really, it's a docking station so that you can take the iPad, put it in there, and you, you can run off.
It's not that simple.
No, I'm not saying I could just go do that. I'm saying that, that's the idea behind it, so.
I agree.
I just don't know how. You're saying the only person got back to you. That's sad, really, because.
Well, there was another gentleman that I think he, he was too busy. It was basically what he told us. He had to report. You're all welcome to go to the fire department. Anything you want, we'll send you.
So we have any idea how long it takes to install one? How long would be.
You said it varies, because like I said, it depends on the dash setup, as Chief Baker was explaining, and where you're going to get power, sure, in the ground. So it's different for every single rig. Some rigs are, are what we call the commercial chassis, which is a regular truck chassis. I think we know all about that. And some are custom chassis, like, like our engines are custom chassis. Nick will know all about that. And some are custom chassis, like, like our engines are custom chassis. So it's different where you're gonna get to the battery block, depending on what kind of rig you have.
Can I just ask one question? I just wanna make sure. So the twelve units times the twelve hundred dollars is the fourteen-four?
That's correct.
It's the person installing and buying the physical unit. And the physical units are four thousand or is it including that four thousand as well?
The iPads?
No, the physical amount.
Yeah, that's part of it. Yeah.
Yes. So the twelve hundred you were quoted per unit included in three thirty-five.
Actual docking station itself.
Yes. Alright.
Because, because the thing is that, that was the one thing that Nick, and he's on here tonight, he's talking. That's the one thing that Nick wouldn't go through state bid on. Everything else that.
I understand, but so usually you buy the equipment from one person and the installer just installs. Are we buying the equipment from the installer?
Yes.
Okay.
Equipment's coming through him and he's gonna install all of it.
I just wanna make sure that we then weren't short of four thousand dollars.
Oh, no.
Okay.
No, we're not.
Did we, we bought the iPads already? Did I miss that?
No, we're here tonight to hopefully get approval from you folks to get them.
Well, you approved the twenty-two-two included the iPads.
Yep, that's all the IT upgrade.
Twenty-two-two.
Yeah, the IT upgrade includes the iPads, which will be mounted. So there's seven of those. That's not, sorry.
They're self-cocked, between two departments.
They exist and they.
Right.
We already have.
You have existing.
Yeah, like I said, the one on our, our newest engine, six already has one and we're matching, both departments are matching that equipment for all the others. So we have all the same.
So the complete project are these first two items here?
That's correct.
Alright.
Yep.
Do you have any more discussion on this? Okay. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Security system. Where Bethel Fire Department is recommended by the Board of Selectmen not to exceed twenty thousand nine hundred sixty-one dollars is your motion.
So move.
Second. Alright.
Do you know where it's coming from, Dan?
Questions or comments?
As you say, I move that we take the twenty thousand nine hundred and sixty-one on cat mom, correct?
Okay, so a second?
Second.
Very good. So let's talk about. So.
Chris, can you just let us know what, what that is?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so my predecessor started this, this project. He thought he had the money approved then. So he stopped with new strings. But now we're in the middle. There's your wire run. Another work done. We tune up, what was it, about seventy-two hundred dollars, something like that.
I don't.
How long ago was that? How long ago?
Uh, this is, I took over like a year and three months ago, so it was before that and I took over and started running with it to get it done. Because it makes no sense to us or the taxpayer that you got a project staff done. So what this does is this completes the project. We already have all the wiring. It's all sitting there on spools. What's not done already, plus two boxes of hardware. There's only a minimal amount of hardware that we have yet. And this will take all the keys away. I have to keep bothering Greg from Philly Bay to stick keys made for entry to the building because we've had an influx of members. And that will take all the keys away and will issue fobs to everyone. The fob lets you track what door they come in, what time they come in, the date, everything. So you know who's entering that. You know, you know where they're coming in. And in conjunction with that, we're upgrading a camera system that's, that's in the firehouse, which is black and white currently. It's going to color and it's gonna be more cameras so that there's no blind spots because currently we have a couple of blind spots. And that's not a good thing. You wanna be able to watch over everything. That's all secured in, in my office. Behind a locked door. So everybody who's had access to it and see the screens, see what's going on, but. We will have the ability, as we do now, to go in and go back and backtrack and see if something happened. We'll be able to see it.
So all these doors are gonna be fobbed access. Can your remote open the building?
All these doors will be fobs and you just walk up with a fob.
I, I got the fob, but can you, can you manually release the mag locks on it? I mean, i- if you have that much control of it, or you literally have to have a fob?
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah. For the record.
Yeah. No, no.
And there's also a, a keypad now that's gonna go away on the front of the building. And that will be a fob pad. Because the keypad, unfortunately, you give out the code, you know what happens. Everybody gets.
I know the code.
You probably do. And so that's, I said, you know, that's gotta go away because we don't want that anymore either. That's.
So basically twenty-seven is, is fobs and putting, and finishing cameras?
Yes, sir. That's, that's finishing the project complete. I turn all the keys back to Greg and I move on.
And this, the proposal's dated October. Is this locked in?
It's locked in. I talked to Don Taylor today. He's. Both the gentleman here in town, they probably knows of the works with United, so on. They're just waiting to, to get back to work and finish the job.
Are you gonna be notified if someone opens it with a key instead of a fob? Does it have that technology?
I believe the door, when the door opens, yeah, it'll tell me that the door's open. But it doesn't matter how.
But you opened it with a metal key now? No, next question is.
The keys are gonna be gone. You can't open it with, you're not gonna, we're gonna take.
You're getting rid of the keys then?
I'm getting rid of it.
You're getting rid of the key in the door also? Okay.
Five only.
All those tumblers come out there?
Yeah, and you're putting on a blanket.
Anymore, you know, to yourself, right?
And the, and the quote for the mobile lock, that is stated, that was dated as of like October, so I mean.
You're honoring, you're honoring all the prices.
And then that's note two, correct?
I'm sorry?
On the, on the United alarm proposal, there's no note two electric door hardware to be provided by, obviously.
Right, yeah, we have, like I said, we have most of the hardware sitting in boxes. And they, I made them check it all. I said, I have to have it all checked and it's still viable. They said it is. And there was a couple of doors that I had to add because there were a couple of doors that he wasn't gonna do. I'm like, well, if we're doing it, we should be doing everything, right? He's on, he was like, absolutely, you do everything. You don't do, you don't skip around. You do them all so that everything's secure, including all the interior offices, so that only people that have the access on the fob can get in there.
I have one more question. It's just in regard to note three. And as Nick brought it up, uh, remote access. It says here, remote access to lock and unlock doors can be provided at a cost of a night at nine ninety-five a door. We have thirteen doors.
Oh, United can open.
They can, they can provide that. It's not, we're not doing that.
Can we add it at another time?
We, we could add it at another time. I didn't see the, the reason for that because if we're doing fobs, we should be sticking with fobs.
But it can be added.
It could be added. That's correct. Absolutely.
I think that's a service from United that if you call up and say, hey, I wanna get in a building, they'll remote open it and they're charging like four, like the information line, but it's nine ninety-five.
Right, and then there's a small service fee per year that I've already accounted for in the upcoming budget. Take care of the service fee.
And any more questions or comments?
Okay, it builds a hundred dollars.
If I do, it makes paying, right?
Yeah.
There you go.
Ten for the first hundred.
Yeah.
Look up to your payroll. Okay. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let's move on to consideration of next gen CAD systems for Bethel Fire Department, Stoney Hill Fire Department, recommended by the Board of Selectmen not to exceed ten thousand dollars from C N R.
I would second it.
Well, no, is there? I guess I'll, I'll make the motion. I make the motion next second. Okay, questions or comments?
I think Chief Baker can just speak about this a little bit.
Great.
Okay, so the, the town had approved the, the changing of the CAD system over to, to next gen. And I had approached the police department about making sure that the fire department would, in conjunction with the M S, be a part of that upgrade because right now, for example, the current system, the CAD system that they use, each call, they have to print out the call, walk over to a fax machine, fax that call to the Fire Department, one or both. Then we have to print it out. Then we have the numbers that we need to write the reports. So I suggested going, you know, with kind of a digital a- aspect. So putting in import and export functions of the new CAD system to the software that we use for medical reports and for fire reports. And also the mobile CAD version so that we can get exactly what Chief McCollum was talking about. Turn-by-turn instructions for addresses, mapping, hydrant locations. Two-way communications with dispatch for updated information such as access to buildings. They can put in codes which would not go over radio and, and be public information. We can ask questions. They can answer all through the, the CAD. So it's basically a mobile version of what they're using in the dispatch center. So, yeah, there's gonna be a licensing for each of those tablets. There's gonna be a licensing and integration fees for the import export to the two, for software that are needed for firing.
When you say dispatch, the P D dispatch, and this is something you need to make it work in your trucks electronically instead of the faxing and all that other stuff?
Both for working inside the trucks and also for working for the software that we're currently using for documentation of the calls.
So the public safety dispatch is at the P D, you know. But it's not P D dispatch. It's public safety dispatch is for everybody. Unfortunately, when it was started, we weren't.
Left out.
So now Chief Baker and I are playing catch-up here to make sure that what fire departments and the M S need in this town concerning the dispatch is included. There may be more stuff down the road. You know, we're not gonna, you know, tell you no. There might be other things that need to be added in the future.
This will try.
But this is, yeah, this is what's really important now to get added. As Chief Baker said, that brings us up to speed with them.
So what?
Theirs might be, actually, today.
Yeah.
Changing over from the old CAD system to the new CAD system. They're working out bugs, but the reason why I pushed hard for this as fast as I could was to try and lump it all together. So while they have the, the next gen techs here, making sure they work out the bugs, can they work on getting this integration and syncing process done?
So, as with most technology, it becomes obsolete. So is this sort of a, is the setup here upgradable for a certain amount of time or does it have a life expectancy? Like, you know, when you can add things or integrate, sometimes that's a window of time, which can be anywhere from five minutes to ten years, you know? So I was just wondering if you know anything about.
Didn't really approach that question specifically, but I've been using this system for almost eight years now in Danbury and they've been using it for many years before that. So I don't think it's anything that's gonna be going away anytime soon.
Not even going away, not compatible with something that you have to completely.
Would be just the individual tablets maybe need to be replaced because of needing more storage space or processor speed, but.
Okay.
Out of the ordinary.
Right. Is there, you see, is the total here on this, ninety-five-ten? They have ten thousand as the ask, or is there?
They, they voted for no more than ten thousand.
The, the Fire Commission voted to make it ten thousand.
Right.
Just in case they needed a little bit more, not, not to exceed ten thousand is what we did.
And that's both departments.
So is there some concern that the price of the software has gone up, there's a mission piece that's needed?
I don't think so. I think it's, as Rich said, that the commission just gave a round number and that's what they voted on.
We had some verbal quotes that we were just waiting for confirmation. That's why.
So this is an upper quote. This is just a.
Oh, that, yeah, that is now, yeah, it wasn't at the time.
But there was other components. So next gen wants licensing fees for the export. But then there was, for instance, the two departments using the software called emergency reporting. They might want you to take the information in. So there's two sides of the, the process. So that's why we're waiting for some additional quote. So that's why they wanted the, not to exceed ten thousand dollars.
See, it all has to be able, obviously, to talk to each other. Then emergency reporting is very important for us because, as Chief Baker said, that's all of our reporting and all that has to be done because then that goes to the fire marshal.
Yeah, yeah.
And then the fire marshal is sending it on to where it used to go from there to the state and wherever else.
Yeah, no, I mean, it sounds like an important piece of equipment. I guess my question is, do you really need ten thousand or do you need ninety-five-ten?
Um, as I said, that, that, that was, Rich may be able to answer that.
The, the Fire Commission just voted that in case they needed a few extra dollars, not to exceed the ten thousand, but not to have to come back to it for another five hundred dollars. You know, we'd have hold up the project if they couldn't do it. So the Fire Commission voted to expend ten thousand not to exceed. And that's what we presented to the Board of Selectmen as a Board of Selectmen, prove that to move on.
And just to be clear, I wanna ask Brad Herring. What happens is they pay what they owe. It's not like you're gonna get ten thousand dollar bag of cash, so.
Right, it might be less.
Exactly. So they're just going to, you know, pay what, what comes in. Okay, any more discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you for your service.
Okay, next, we have, we're gonna set the salaries as in the advisory charter. And you should have a list, yes?
I just wanna update one thing that we talked about, you'd asked me about earlier.
Yes.
The request from the registrars.
Yeah.
Was twenty thousand five hundred, an additional fifteen hundred, five hundred of which gets paid to them now as a stipend.
Okay.
Instead of it being a stipend, they just wanna move it into their annual salary just to make it cleaner.
Okay.
Really a thousand dollars increase.
Right.
The stipend is regulatory they need to get. So by, if you vote to move it up a thousand, they're asking that you make it up fifteen and include the stipend as part of it.
Okay, is that sort of like the town clerk salary that has?
It's a little different. It's, there's certain things that they have to do that.
So what's the dollar amount that we have to, if, if we're gonna do it?
If you approved the request that they made, it's to make each registrar's salary twenty thousand five hundred.
Right.
Which is really in real dollars, a thousand dollars more each.
A piece, so it's actually two thousand dollars in total.
Yes.
Okay, well, let's get a motion to just, to discuss setting the salaries and then we'll go one by one. So do I have a motion to consider setting the annual salaries for elected officials?
I make a motion that we're entertaining rate.
Setting the.
Setting the annual salaries for the elected official.
Okay.
And I'll second that motion.
Very good. So.
So we gotta vote on that motion and then we can start discussing the dollar amount, right?
I think we just start discussing, because we had a second. So let's just, Brad, if you could just confirm the Bethel salaries for each of these? And if there's any difference between what is requested and what's here on the paper?
Uh, no, it should be up to date.
Okay.
If you wanna start with the first selectman, his current salary is one hundred five. The positions.
Right.
Salary is.
I understand, because we already, we dealt with this like six months ago, I think, or, yeah, that amount. So really, the only thing that is changed is a request from the registrar. Everything else.
Well. All these salaries on here are the active salaries.
Right.
So the registrars make a request during the budget and we move it to wage adjustment. There is money in the wage adjustment account for the other elected officials if the board chooses to give.
I understand. So then what we can do is we can vote. Or let's vote for each salary per position.
Now, Chairman, I just, I want to think to what Brad said.
Yeah.
To the extent the budget fails, after setting salaries today, we may need to come back. Because we may not have necessary kills. Which is just, we just have to come back and do it. I just wanna make sure folks understand that.
Well, if, if one of, two of them fail, then we'll have to come back anyway. So. Alright, well.
How, my question is, is, so is there money in the wage adjustment?
How, my question is, is, so is there money in the wage adjustment account to make these salaries higher?
Yes, yes.
So who wanted to change somebody by two thousand dollars, there'd be money in there already, two thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Um, the first lockman position was just recently put at that amount, he was thinking. Quite a bit less, and this was, when did we vote on this, I think it was about, I think, six months or something.
And what, the salary changed for July one.
July one, okay.
And what was it before, I'm sorry.
It was ninety-five thousand, and I believe any changes you voted on tonight will be effective July one with the new budget. To Bobby and Frieda's point, you would have time to adjust if the reference.
Okay.
And is there urgency to do it tonight before the budget passed or failed tomorrow?
It's, it's, you know what it is, it's an interpretation between the way that Tim Bevel sees it and the way. Martin Lawler sees it, and both are good cases, even though I know that he's the town attorney. The wording is a little bit nebulous, where you could say it should be done annually. We talked about this, Bobby and Frieda, so it doesn't have to be, but we, why not?
Well, and now, I, I would say the charter's clear. But ultimately, it's in your discretion.
It's the annually, that word, that makes me think we should.
And, and Bobby, it says during the budget process, is that not?
Well, but Nick, it, it says that it's qualified, and it's only for the first year, which was two thousand and fourteen.
But that's where the interpretation looks like, I, I just report the news.
No, I know, but I can tell you the way, the legal construction is clear. People might interpret it differently, but legal construction, and how lawyers read it, it's pretty clear. But I don't think we need to get into that discussion, because it's your, I believe it's the chair's discretion, if we wanna do it. Now, or after, historically, literally even before I got on the board. It was done after the budget.
I know.
I did, there was enough contingency, and that was for a couple reasons, right, if the budget failed, then we didn't have to go back in a minute.
It's another account we had open up.
And, and we didn't wanna personalize the discussion, but it was the position.
Oh, but again, that's.
I understand.
Wanna do it now, I believe you do it now.
Right, and my only, my only thing is that I figure this is, has to do with the budget. We're still in the budget, you know, we would have done it last week, and we postponed the meeting, so.
So does that mean we could give people raises tonight and take them away if the budget fails?
Look, anything's possible, somebody wants to make a motion for a position, have at it, and we'll talk about it, so.
How much is in wage adjustment, how much is in there?
We had to remember that the wage adjustment account is all the non-union wages increases, which is up to the first selectmen. The elected officials and the unions that are up. So currently, the police contract ends six thirty, the public works contract ends six thirty, and the office workers union. So there's three unions up, and to complicate it even more this year, is it's a year with fifty-three K periods.
Good thing there's fifteen hundred dollars under.
So the account as a whole is four hundred and thirty-three thousand seven hundred and ninety-six.
But we only get to the elected.
I just meant if we wanted to.
Yeah, I mean, if somebody wants to make a motion.
I would make a motion that we keep the first electmen's as of July one at a hundred and five thousand.
We already have a motion on the floor that needs to be voted for. Because there was a motion made by Nick, and seconded by John, to set the annual salaries for the elected officials.
Right. And then we'll do it individually, so, because we, we started discussion before we voted on the motion, so all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, now, wanna make that?
Sorry, was there just one night?
Wait, what were the nays that we weren't gonna? Discuss it tonight and do it.
Right, but some people don't want to.
No, I'm not saying I wouldn't, I would rather wait.
It's a democracy, okay, so what are the votes?
Just, because if we were gonna go today, if we wanna give a raise or whatever, I'd rather have the budget done before we did, that's all.
So who are the yeses? Okay, thanks.
Okay.
So the first motion was what, Nick?
I'd make a motion to keep the first selectman's salary at a hundred and five thousand as of July one.
Second?
Second.
Discussion.
I guess I would like us to think about where our first select position gets paid. In comparison to the market. I believe the first select position is a full-time position in there, so. It's not the kind of position one retires into, or if they do, I believe they'll be surprised at how much work it takes. I, I just feel that in the market, when we're competing for folks, the salary's got to be competitive. It's gotta be, it doesn't have to be at the high end, really can't, shouldn't be at the low end, but we should be in the middle. And I believe that increasing this is, is appropriate. Again, to make the position attractive for talented and qualified candidates. To understand that our first select, as that position has additional responsibilities. That some of these other first selects don't have, for example, sitting as chair of the public utility commission. Very few, if any, of these other town firsts have that responsibility. And with it comes some personal liability. I, I, I just think if we are looking to attract talented folks. Since you and I have talked about this, right, my, my firm starts college graduates at a level higher. Than what our first select card pays, I would just suggest we, and, and I like your theory, right, of doing it gradually. I'd like to try to start that or continue that gradual process by, by bumping it up to some number to at least get it somewhere in. You know, in, in a higher range, closer to the middle, high midpoint.
But to your point, Bob, last year we gave them almost ten percent raise to get them, to get them up. And again, I don't think we can afford to keep doing that every year.
Alright.
And I get it, you know what I mean, that it, it, it should be a hundred and forty thousand, I get it, you know what I mean, but it, it's, it's still. There's, there's, everybody pulling everybody's way for different needs in this town. Well, but, but again, I, I hope the, the first selectman that would want this job is, is doing it for the love of the town. I understand they have to be compensated, but again, we gave them a ten thousand dollar raise last year.
And my only response to that, because it's already in the budget, so we're not gonna be asking for any more money. Right, this is in wage contingency, but this discussion that we're doing now is the. Specifically pulling out of that account and putting it into the first select salary. So we really aren't asking for any more, what we're doing now is actually allocating it, or specifically.
Well, that money would stay in that account, and, and it would be added to his W two, so it, it does come out of that account if it was raised.
Alright, but we're gonna tax people, assuming this money is in there, and if we don't make the arrangement, and if the other negotiations all go a certain way. And there's some number left over, that number is gonna fall down to the bottom line and go to the general fund.
And then maybe buy a fire truck eventually, you know, well, but you could also run out of money. You know, there's four hundred something thousand in there, but if the negotiations with all those unions go well, and we start spending it all, then we could run out of that. No, there's money that, there's four hundred in there, it's not a lot. Brad, is that account gonna run out?
We have it certain negotiations, yeah.
No, but it could, it very well could.
Yeah, it, it's a factor. Nobody's asked the question, but I won't answer it anyway, telling you how much I put in there for the elected. Because if you start backing out pieces, the unions are gonna know what you budgeted for, so. You could, it depends on negotiations go, say that one of the unions wanted to give up something that was really expensive but not salaries. For a higher salary, the town may make that move because it's gonna be beneficial in the long run, but it's gonna affect its bottom line. You know?
I think that was a third factor for what we used to do after the.
You know, it's, but these, the union negotiations. One or two may be done by July, um, the last time we did the police, it took a year now.
He works with the public utilities, right, it's an extra responsibility. How come he doesn't get anything through the public utilities for that?
We discussed that, remember?
But I, I think that's a great idea. I believe that the public utility commission have to agree to.
Yeah. We did discuss that.
We would have to agree to it, and probably have to go to a public hearing and everything on it, too.
Right.
I don't know if you'd like to go to a public hearing on it, you just haven't included it in your budget, but.
But I think it's a fantastic.
Well, it, it makes sense, because, you know, listen, the bottom line is, you look at all the towns in our area, and the responsibility that the first select has. To a point, it should be more money, I, I don't know how we get there, takes time, I mean, when I saw it was ninety-five thousand for as long as it was, I was like, what are we, oh, no? You know, because it was, it doesn't attract anybody of worth, because you have to leave a full-time job to run for that job.
Some people, ninety-five thousand go out of money.
It, it is a lot of money, but for the responsibility in the market, John, that, because to me, Nick, is not a lot of money. It is not a lot of money compared to what's on the market, and if we wanna attract good people to run for that, I think it's just something to get thought to. If we could do it through public utilities or something, I mean, that, I think that salary should be least, what is it, New Town, it's five thousand dollars more, that's what it should be. Part of the line, but that's the least worth of.
The median, if we were, if we were to look at the median of these surrounding towns. Yeah, between one ten and one fifteen, right, number five is one fifteen to eight seven, and number six is one ten eight fifty-two. So somewhere in the middle there, we would be right at the middle of the pack.
So even if we did half of that this year and then half next year, who, just.
I thought we did ten thousand last year, and that was a lot, but.
Well, I think we're far behind.
You know, there's a motion made, and if it fails, and someone else wants to pick it up.
Trip, Madam Chair, it's your decision, right, it's your discretion, to me, these are some of the reasons to do it after the place passes.
Well, I would like to say my comments, um, this is where I'm coming from. So many things have happened, just in the country and our world's interest rates, everything is going bonkers. And I just feel with this, I just felt that it's better to. If, for example, with this first selectman's salary, because there's an option for public utilities to melt, melt that. To, to not, to not raise this at this time. We, we are at the behest of unions, there's so many things, and we don't know how that's gonna go, I mean, things are changing. By the hour, so that's, that was my thinking in, in wanting to keep it at this for now. But, you know, that's what we're talking.
One point, and that's a bit, so this board would have to raise the salary. The public utilities couldn't raise the first selectman's salary.
But could they?
They could agree to pay part of it.
No, that's what I'm talking.
But you'd still, this board would, say the public utilities agree tomorrow to pay ten percent of the salary. This board is still have to agree to increase it, otherwise the salary, the general fund would have.
I understand that, but still.
Yeah.
That could still be a separate action, it's not, you know, if we did that and said, you know, we wanted to base it on it coming out of public utilities. We can't do that, because that's not a decision that's made by them yet.
Madam Chair, could we do it contingent upon, could, could we make a motion and, and do it, and then contingent upon it coming from?
If you're a crafty one, Dan.
Cause I don't know what chair, right?
Yeah.
They go to public utilities and say, hey, can you do it, and then we cut, why do we, can we come back and later, even if we re-visit it, and this is our, buying the apple.
But I, but I think we're also comparing apples to oranges, if we're considering public works to be kicking in some, because. The other selectmen do not have responsibility for, like, for that, for utilities, so the midpoint of. Towns where the first selectman does not have that responsibility. Okay, seriously, you're saying the salary plus if the public utilities wants to, right, if we were to be. In the middle of the market, it would be somewhere between one ten and one fifteen, and if public works wanted to add additional. It's not so much being in the middle, where I know what you're saying, it's, it's, I guess, because of the, we already raised it by ten thousand. Less than a year ago, and it just, to me, like.
It was a year ago, so his salary went into effect July first, and so we're voting on a number that would go into effect July, July first. So this would technically be like an annual raise that everybody, you know, typically gets.
Well, not ten thousand.
But we, we didn't say ten percent, I don't, there wasn't a motion or a discussion on here.
We talked about last year.
Right.
Yeah.
To your point, you were saying, what if it's three percent, or what was?
Right, so six percent, six percent of, of his current salary would be sixty-nine hu- a sixty-nine hundred dollar raise. Which would get him to, what is that, just over one ten, um, and then the other part that I've heard is that. We, like, we can't ask public utilities to pay a portion of that if we don't raise it. Correct?
You can, you can add, they, they have to vote.
Right, so we can say we would like to raise his salary to a hundred, let's say a hundred and eleven thousand, or give him a five percent raise. And say we'd like to give him contingent on public utilities, an additional five percent raise if public utilities would raise that.
How do you think we need?
We keep saying, Tim.
Yeah, you know, I was gonna say the physician, it's the physician. I know, call the physician first select. Yeah, point of order, somebody, please, it's like the Mad Hatter's Tea Party. One at a time.
Going back to a hundred and five, our, our budget is eighty-three million, is it almost eighty-five, I guess? New Town is a hundred and seventeen million dollar budget, and we're only five thousand off of New Town, and New Town is as tremendous amount of. Of miles of roads more than Bethel, so I think it's fair for a working town, a blue collar town, so. I think we should check, try the motion, and fails, and someone else can jump on.
Okay, if there's no discussion on this particular motion, why don't we just, as Al said, just try your mind. Okay, all in favor? Okay, the motion is to keep the first selectman's salary at one hundred and five thousand dollars.
As of July first.
Yes, as of July first, thank you. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Nay.
So, three, yes.
Fail, so, okay, so now we need a new motion. Cause that means something's cooking somewhere.
What I'm struggling with a little bit is, I really like the idea of trying to allocate some of this to public utilities. That seems appropriate to me, though, this might be the first time, do, do we have anybody from public utilities?
Because the, the rates are gonna go up again, and, and here we've talked about rates going up again. The rates are gonna go up because we have to pay sixteen million dollars to the city of Danbury in the near future.
We're sort of having two meetings at, at a time, because you're public utilities, and that's great, but.
I'm sorry, but he, he's, I think he's sitting, why I thought he might be able to put, have some input is that, I believe you're sitting in for that.
Oh, no, you can have input, I'm just saying, we can't make any deals.
No, no, can't, well, I'm just saying, it's, this is new to the board.
Right, I, well, I, we've talked about it.
You know, we're one commissioner, maybe, how many are there, three?
Three, no, five.
There's five.
Five, three board of selectmen, and then there's two additional. Can I just give, just appoint a reference to everybody with this, so currently, public utilities pays. Part of the public works admin's salary, half of it, they pay part of the controller's salary. They pay part of the tax collector's salaries, so there is precedent that the public utilities paying. What I would deem their fair share for services rendered. It just, for whatever reason, they've never paid any part of the first selection or the selectmen's salaries.
It, it's been discussed.
So, but I think the board of finance would have to make a formal motion at some point, which you can't tonight, because you're only talking salaries. For the board of, the PUC to look at it. You can, you know, you can ask them to look at it and give them a, give an answer.
Or Mr. Straighten could, you know, you could certainly bring it up, even though you're not for it. To see, you know, take the temperature of the room and see what other people think.
Bring it up.
You put it on an agenda? Right, so we wouldn't even be involved in that.
Bring me back to our discussion.
Right, yes.
So I'd like to make a motion for a four percent raise of forty six hundred dollars to the first selectmen's salary.
Okay, so set that salary, do the math and then.
It's a hundred and nine thou- one oh nine six hundred. That's a four percent raise.
Okay. Is there a second for that motion? Okay, are we gonna discuss this or should we vote?
So four percent comes from?
Three to six is typically corporate standard, I pulled a number in the middle.
So I guess my question is, if we're talking about maybe the PUC adding in to pay for the first selectmen because it's one of its responsibilities. Where, why are we considering giving him a raise before they agree to that? Shouldn't, if if that's what the commission thinks as a whole that we should be doing, I think that we should. Not look at any of the salary increases and wait to hear what the PUC has to say.
Well, they would only really be contributing to the first selectman position salary.
Well, it sounds like best the one for debate tonight.
Right, exactly. Well, they're, they're all up for debate, but I think if I may say what Ms. Pierce might be saying is. Give him a raise and put that to the commission. Am I right?
So regardless of where we come from or where the money comes from. I think it's important that we establish that position is important enough that raises are given periodically. It's not just, we, you know, we're, we're sitting in line in the sand and saying, we don't, you know, raise our our first election salary. It doesn't, it doesn't matter who's in it now, it matters where it's going. So I think establishing that, that yes, once in a while, there's a cost of living or something small. I don't, I'm not gonna say we have to go to a hundred and fifteen or a hundred and ten, but even if we did something that was part of coming, you know, keeping up the inflation. I then sent, it sends a signal that we're trying to make that job competitive, so when somebody does decide to run for it. That there's an understanding there that, like, we're gonna be like the other towns and we want to attract the best people. That's the only rea- I mean, I don't wanna break the bank, I know we have the money in the wage account.
Right now.
Right now, and and I think we will, but maybe we don't go crazy, maybe we do a a three or four percent or something. You know, I'd be, I'd be in line with something like that as long as it's reasonable. It's not about who's in the office now. It's important to keep saying him.
I'm not saying him. I I understand what you're saying.
This isn't like the only reason, this isn't, I don't feel like we're trying to reward anybody or doing anything like that. Trying to do is is get better people in that position.
Wow, I'll tell Matt you said.
Yeah, just really reasonable, but I think.
That's okay, just, you know what, it's just. I hear what you're saying and um, the problem is you have to look at it historically as well about how, what incrementally we've done. And, you know, to next point, it's, you know.
You got ten last year, so if you cut that in half.
Maybe it was deserved to put, and don't say he, it was, it was deserved to have the position be raised, I understand.
I mean, I'm just comparing, I'm just looking at all the other towns.
I know, and sometimes.
Do with the added responsibilities, like. Like that is an issue.
I understand, but sometimes. You can't sometimes look at other towns because they're all different in their makeup.
I know these towns well enough, having been in the area. And and I've represented some of them.
Okay, well. Should we vote on?
Any discussion from your side is is for, is for the numbers, should we do three?
Well, there's a motion on the floor for one oh nine six hundred.
We can discuss any of the the numbers because we could have been in the motion. There's an open discussion about, I think, the number, if four is too high, we do three. At least we're moving in the right direction, like, like Nick had said, go incremental. It's a thought, you know.
I I like this discussion, this is, I think this is a great discussion, thank you, Madam Chair, for facilitating. I would, I would prefer that we go higher, cause I see what's in the market. For folks who are of a relatively typical background for for some, a position like this. And. It's not an attractive role, it's not an attractive salary. But if we think we wanna do incrementally at four percent. I I I'd prefer to go higher, but if, I like Dan's point, we're starting to message that we're. We're aware of what we need to do to attract top talent. And I I think that is a solid middle ground.
We can say that about every elected official on this board that spent lots of money tonight. Well, we're doing this one at a time, so. Well, but what I'm getting at is we're, we're making the case and you can, you can give it a different title and you can be talking about every elected official.
Well, this is, this is one that has been historically behind every other one.
And I think, John, if at the benchmarking, our first select positions, while they absolutely deserve to be paid more. They get paid a pretty high level when we look at the market. So, you know, if we're looking to be market comp, our first select levels. Is sufficient for market competitiveness.
Do you mean second, you mean?
Yeah. Yeah, I I consider the first as the first select and then yeah, the selects. The selects. I'm trying to make it. My daughter, I'm sure, I'm sure my daughter's on there, trying not saying just men. So the first select. That's a market thing, on the selects, I believe, again, based on this information. We, I don't, I would suggest we need to do it first.
There are some that don't even get any of these things, so, in some towns.
Can I just add, just, it just informational. So, the salary in twenty seventeen was eighty four, seven, one, eight. And it was moved to eighty seven, two, five, nine.
When?
That was changed, I think, for July one of twenty seventeen.
Okay.
July one of twenty eighteen, it was moved from the eighty seven, two, five, nine to the ninety five thousand. Then, nothing in nineteen twenty or until July of twenty twenty one, when it was a hundred and five. So there's been some history of going yearly with small incremental increases and a history of nothing, a job. So. But it's whatever the board wants to do. Cause you can't set, here's that, here's what we wanna do for the next three years, you look at it as a yearly basis.
Right. Amendments, move, move the question. Okay, let's vote on Bobby Joe's. Motion to put the first select salary at one hundred nine thousand, six hundred dollars. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? So that passes. All right, next, let's go to town clerk. If you wouldn't mind, Brad, just a little history on this, the past years, cause I know we made some adjustments and I just wanna make sure I'm clear on how that went.
So. Doesn't come across clean, so just bear with me for a minute. So it was moved, moved to the current level seventy seven, eight, ten, uh, for July one of twenty twenty one. Prior to that, it was increased for July one of twenty twenty. From sixty nine, six oh seven to six seventy four, six oh seven, so five thousand dollars. In July of twenty twenty, and that's when she came with the art, or, yeah, she did, cause it.
Yes, she wanted to get that.
Is the train station.
Exactly.
Um, and that's why on the sheet, there's the allocation to the train station. So it was five thousand, but because we did it as a percentage of the salary to the train station. It's currently five thousand, four, four, six. And if the board increases it tonight, the proration to the train station would go up as well.
So that means the train station pays part of her salary.
Correct, yes.
That comes exclusively out of the.
And if I remember correctly, if the funds aren't there. She mustn't get paid.
Correct, the funds.
But it's pretty, it's pretty static, it's, yeah, it's got money in it.
There's not a, there's not a lot of expenses against that account. Um, and I don't know what it is, I'll hand edit it, look it up, but I think when we did, when the board did the five thousand. There was like forty years of five thousands in there, so, and granted. So just a little background for some of the board members that weren't on the board then, so that's the. New train station, we we call it new, but it's been that way for a while. And the money generated from the parking of that can only be used for that property.
Right, and she came because what was happening is she, there was a lot of action over there on the kiosks and she was managing everything and she was doing. I don't remember how many hours more work, but it was quite substantial, so. And we have that account to, to pull from for that.
Do any of these other towns have train stations?
Reading does.
And they would be responsibilities typically of the town clerk?
It varies by town.
Um, excuse me, let's do this, let's make a motion to. About the salary of that position and then we'll discuss it, we'll do what we did with the last one, cause I realize we're discussing without a motion. You wanna make a motion?
I would make a motion that we keep the town clerk's salary of seventy seven thousand, eight hundred and ten dollars.
Second, some seconding that? Discussion, I'll second it for discussion.
I know the answer, Brad, but the seventy seven, eight is with the five thousand for the train station.
Correct.
And I know Lisa works hard, but does the, does she come in on Saturday and Sunday to do that extra work or that's in her normal forty hour a week work?
Uh, I don't know.
Maybe we can get her on Zoom?
No.
So, Brian, I'm sorry, that's total seventy seven, eight, ten with the train station.
Yes.
I think I put, my point I was making is she's doing that in her regular day of business. Just like if someone asked me to do something at work, I do it during my regular eight hours worth of work. Um, that's great that she's getting the five thousand from the train station, um, that's, I consider a salary. She would say it's a stipend, um, it's in her W two.
I think it was, um, not necessarily within the eight hours of work, though.
That she's coming in on Saturday?
She has some part time, I think she was a shifting of responsibilities that, you know, she was doing.
Just leaves only one eight hours.
She's an elected official, she.
Yeah, if people have a salary, they generally, it ebbs and flows, that's my understanding.
But I think her point, well, I I should argue her point, but I think originally her point was. I have enough work to do in my eight hours a day, I spend additional time doing these responsibilities and that's why we all said.
She made her point and that's why we, absolutely, and it's an account we can pull from that has to be used for that anyway, or for those.
I am here. Okay, so, I don't know if you want me to con- contribute to this, but I have been paying attention to the meeting. I can answer questions if you'd like, I don't know if this is appropriate at this time, but. You seem to have questions, so. Basically, I am the only town clerk that manages the Metro North Station. There is no other, the Reading Train Station is only managed by the Police Department. Any of the other towns are managed not by the town clerk. I do not work on Saturdays unless there's a problem with the kiosk and I will at that time go in. I manage the train station, um, the funding, so I send out the bills, the, um, we charge two fifty annually. All that money comes in and is to be, uh, used for the management of that train station. Um, if you were to have a parking authority, you'd have to have someone down there to manage constantly. So as part of my duties, I do spend quite a bit of time every morning, financials. I manage and maintain the maintenance of it, I empty the coin machine, I change the paper. Um, I make sure that there, it's being enforced. So as, as Nick said, he thinks it's part of my salary, um, you know, yes, it is in my W two. But if you were to hire a parking authority, you'd pay a lot more than five thousand dollars to compensate someone to manage the train station. So I have issue with that only because that's not part of my regular duties as town clerk. Do you guys have any other questions?
I I just wanna ask, um, Brad a question. So, do you know how much is in that account? Because my thought was to, cause Lisa, would you say it's now, I mean, COVID, there's an ebb and flow. But now you're, you're pretty much up to your capacity as far as what you were doing or even more?
No, the, the numbers were down, they are, they are increasing.
Yeah.
Um, you know, at, at max, when we did the, the, I took over that management for public works. We were to capacity, um, then with COVID, people were working from home. We still sell, you know, approximately a hundred, we're still increasing, people are still purchasing permits for the year.
Do you see that going up, you know, seeing activity increasing?
It's gradually increasing, yes.
Okay, so here's my question.
Roughly three hundred thousand.
Okay, so here's my question, could we not augment that stipend? As an option?
I believe so, I think when the board voted two years ago to do it, I think they said the five thousand comes from the railroad account. I think you'd have to, because it's technically the state can come in and take half whenever they want. I think you had to keep it within the realm of.
I mean, I'm just saying that.
I know, but what I'm trying to say is, I don't think you could turn around and say, oh, the railroad station should pay half for salary.
Flying that, I, I was saying that. That we could increase that amount, it just seems like there's some wiggle room in there and. When did, has the state ever come and asked for half the money?
No.
Oh shit, yeah, this is public now, public record. Anybody up there in Hartford is watching.
Uh, I will answer your question in one second.
Thank you for allowing me to contribute.
Uh, it's seven and a half percent of the salary.
Okay, what would it be if it were ten percent?
Well, eh, the five thousand, four, forty six would go to the seven thousand, seven, eighty one. Assuming you didn't increase the salary.
Right, let's say the salary stays the same and we're gonna augment.
Got you. So you want the five, four, four, six?
Brad, you, are you?
Trying not to say anything wrong.
I'm thinking maybe around seventy four hundred or seventy five hundred.
Um, maybe I just misunderstood what you're trying to do.
I'm trying to say, take the seventy seven, eight, ten, subtract the five, four, four, six and take the five, four, four, six and increase it. So that war is coming out of the trains.
Or said differently, I think the same.
Oh yeah, how do you say, how would you say it?
Just to pick a number. It goes to eighty thousand total. And now, rather than five, four, four, six coming from the train.
Right.
It's five, four, four, six plus the twenty one, nine, which is the increase.
That's what I'm talking about.
Which, by the way, eighty is the median for that. If you take out, like, Danbury, Rock and Stratford, which are not really similar to our towns.
So it's, to go to ten percent, you're talking about one thousand eight hundred and fifteen dollars.
Okay, well, you know, um, we have a motion to keep the salary, so let's vote on that. Or we can amend the motion. Yeah, so, so, so the, what, we can amend the motion to make that position eighty thousand. With the condition that X amount is taken out of the.
So you wanna increase the.
The rail.
The rate that the railroad pays to ten percent.
Yes, sir. Yeah, that's.
Well, the salary is just getting set at eighty.
Right.
And that they're saying that.
Eighteen hundred was.
Under the condition that the railroad.
Yeah, I wanted a portionated so that it makes sense in the motion.
It's not, it's the, the real number. It'd be nine point five percent, I think. Right, because we're gonna, it, it, I believe what we're talking about is moving into eight. That's an increase of twenty one nine.
Yeah.
I did that by hand.
But that twenty one ninety is gonna go on the train, yes.
Yes.
Taking the train.
Alright, yeah, I understand. Yeah, because otherwise, if you just made it eighty and made it twenty percent, you're actually lowering to what the general fund pays by three hundred and sixty four dollars.
Right.
So.
May I amend your motion?
Sure.
I'd like to amend Nick's motion by whatever numbers you just said.
Alright, so, can I just make this one suggestion?
Sure.
Set it at eighty and increase the railroad to nine percent. And like, I know, but let's just, you know, we're talking about like a hundred.
Nine point five.
Are you wanting to make it, yeah?
Yes. Okay, I'd like to amend the motion that the salary for the town clerk position is raised to eighty thousand with nine point five percent of that being paid by the railroad station account. Do I have a second?
And just real quick, Brad, why are we chasing the ratio? Uh, she got, our motion last year was five, but now it's five thousand four hundred.
We're chasing the ratio so the general fund doesn't pay more.
Right.
Okay, that's why.
So that the raise and then is entirely out of the railroad account.
Okay.
Okay, I'm sorry, but Nick originally started making that motion.
I amended my motion from keeping the salary to the nine point five, I make it eighty thousand.
So, I'm sorry.
So, so Nick made the motion, so who seconded that motion? I know that Cynthia read the motion for everybody. Who seconded?
Dan seconded.
Dan, yeah. Here we go, thank you.
Okay, there we go. So we're amended now.
We're all good.
We're good. Do we even want to discuss this anymore?
So, yeah, so my discussion or my, my question and Brad, I don't know if you could answer it, Lisa could answer it. So what does a parking authority typically pay for a project that size?
I have no idea.
No one has.
I, I, I can contribute because I worked for the Danbury Parking Authority before I became town clerk or assistant town clerk. The office administrator was responsible for collection of funds, the ticketing, et cetera. I don't ticket. We, I work with PD in order to get them down there. It's an administrative position. I mean, I do go down there in my car and change the paper and troubleshoot the machine. I mean, that's not normal. But it is an administrative position for the most part. I answer calls regarding problems with it. I, I interface with the, the customer support, with the kiosk, um, the manufacturer, things like that. I mean, uh, is it a full-time job? No. If, because if it was a full-time job, I would not be able to do it during my business hours. Do I work more than a set thirty five hours a week? Yes, I do. Is just because I don't really have, um, much going on outside of my job. So, you know, I do, um, spend. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I have leftovers.
I'm sorry. Anyway, John, I really don't know, um, you know, dollar amounts, they'd have to pay at least twenty grand, I think, for at least a time person to work on what I do for five grand. So that's, that's just my, my gut feeling on that.
You can do that.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Shall we vote?
I think we should.
Unless there's more comments, okay. You made a motion to put the town clerk salary at eighty thousand with nine point five percent coming out of the railroad fund. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, oppose.
That's a clean.
Thank you, Lisa.
As of July one.
As of July one. Thank you.
Thank you all for allowing me to contribute my information.
Don't spend the money.
And thank you. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for your hard work and diligence and your cute little dog. Your dog is adorable. Okay, so we did that. Now let's just go to the treasurer. Which I think, I think what we did was, didn't we raise the selectman and, um, the treasurer to up five hundred the last time we did this?
The, the treasurer was done first to the fifty five.
Okay.
And then the selectmen were moved. So the treasurer had been forty five hundred for a long time.
Okay.
It was moved to fifty five hundred. And then the selectman had been five thousand for a long time. They were moved to fifty five hundred.
Okay. So, we have a motion.
I'll make a motion that we keep the town treasurer at fifty five hundred. I'll second that motion.
Okay.
As of July one.
Discussion.
Three ways it's so well, is, are their responsibilities different than some of the other towns?
Yeah, I, I think that it's, um, you would, you would know, Brad, it's not
How many hours?
Time consuming.
Yeah, they come in once a week and look at the bills and when we do bonding, they're assigned there on the bank. I guess it used to be back in the day closer to ten with a card stipend. And then it was reduced twenty something years ago. I don't want to get Paul mad at me, but the fifty five hundred is right there. It's the same amount as the selectman getting the selectman put in way more hours. And I think Paul would be the first one to tell you that.
Well, I think they, they have different forms of management too, like some are town council or mayoral and cities and that's a whole different.
So I can't answer that. Some towns, the comptroller is higher under the term treasurer. Like some small towns, it's a dual role.
Right.
Got it.
Okay, so.
You gonna make a motion to raise it?
No.
We've been doing them all.
I know, I just, I was more just.
Alright, let's, then let's, let's vote. Let's vote.
This is gonna be one of my first motions that might pass tonight.
I don't know.
Besides adjournment.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion to keep the treasure, okay, order. I don't have a gavel like Bruce Cornwall. Oh my gosh. Alright, all those in favor of the motion to keep the treasurer salary at five thousand five hundred, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed?
Nay, no, I mean.
Oh, you're getting punchy. Okay, let's go to the selectman and then we'll go to the registrar of voters. Is there a motion?
I would like to make a motion and we add two thousand dollars to that salary account, however Brad wants to word it.
Oh wait, I'm talking about the selection, the selection.
Oh, I thought you said.
I said then we'll go to the registrar. Hey, Nick's giving you a raise, Rich. Oh my. Okay.
Wait, what are you seconding?
First of all, let's make sure Nick knows what motion he made. You want to, do you want to keep this?
I want to keep that fifty five. Can I make a motion and we keep the selectman at fifty five hundred? And Rich, thank you for your time and I know it's, this is a token of thank you.
Okay. Yeah.
May, may I address the board?
You may.
Public comments over.
Now, this is subject matter expert. I read, I was reading Robert's rules last night.
You know, the, the selectman's salary was raised, uh, a year ago to fifty five hundred. Previous to that was five thousand, probably for ten years. I don't want to toot my own whistle, but I think the second selectman should have an increase. The second selectman assumes duties when the first selectman is out of town. I know you did, um, a year ago, agreed to, uh, a stipend when the selectman's away for more than fourteen days. That the second selectman would get something. But when he is in town or he's, uh, when he's in his office normally, but out of town on other business, the second selectman assumes some of those duties. If he's, can't make, uh, the H R meetings or the HFC meetings, uh, or, uh, you know, boy scouts or tuition derbies or, um, dinners or birthday parties for a hundred year old people, generally the second selectman does those errands. So, um, which the technically, Brian and I are considered both selectmen. But the second selectman does more duty, has more duties than the first selectman. And also, as you had mentioned before with the, uh, P U C, I do, uh, go out and look at projects, uh, that are currently being run by, uh, P U C, water mains, uh, water tanks, uh, so, um, I, I think the second selectman should have a raise personally, but it's up to the board.
Thank you. I'm gonna give my motion the same.
Okay.
Does anyone have any comments on that motion? I saw you took, took a breath.
No, I just found, is that something we could look at, you know, since a proportion of that responsibility is coming from public utilities and stuff? I mean, I know we throw that out there again, but I don't.
I, I, I would say this, it's, and this has nothing to do, obviously, with you.
No, it's the position.
It's the position.
I feel like most of, most of the things that the second selectman fills in on, how do I say this? They're, they're, they're important when the first selectman can't be at something, it's important, obviously. But at the same time, it, they're usually not, uh, uh, paramount. Right? The, the first selectman isn't at something and somebody's filling in. It, I don't think it always has to be somebody filling in. Because of the role of the first selectman is the only one, if that makes sense. I don't see like going up and making that second selectman a bigger job where there's expectations that second selectman fills in for everything. Right? So I, I just, I'm, I'm a little, I'm not totally convinced that that job should be raised yet. And it has nothing to do with you because you're amazing. And I know, you know, some people put more effort into those jobs.
That's really, so another person might not do it.
Right, another person might not. But that's kind of my thought on the job.
I think what he's saying is you're the Prince Charles of Bethel.
Brad, what was the stipend that we set up for, um, the, the, the second selectman to fill in when the first is not here?
After fourteen days, a hundred and twenty five dollars a day.
Okay. Fourteen calendar days in the year, is that correct?
Correct.
Oh, it's not consecutive.
It has to be gone for fourteen days, no matter how many days, and then he gets a.
I'm thinking it was, he was gone for two weeks then.
Yeah, fourteen total and then he gets a bucket of corn.
A bucket of corn for every day after that.
Yes.
Yes.
You know, we, all day, we've been comparing different towns and Bethel's getting fifty five hundred, Southbury's a bigger town and they're getting fifteen hundred and Reading's a smaller town and they're getting forty two hundred. So fifty five hundred almost seems like the three little bears, like it fits just right.
Okay, so do we want to vote on the little pre move?
Little old town.
Bears. Baby bear motion? Okay. All in favor of keeping the selectman's salary at fifty five hundred dollars, please signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed?
That's two in a row.
Next, you are, you are cooking.
Yeah, I really appreciate your support on that one. Seriously, I, I appreciate.
Actually, in bold type and admit it.
Nick, you actually amended your motion to go to eighty, so you're actually.
Was that three in a row?
Oh, yeah.
I'm not making another one.
You know, I have a soft spot in my heart for the legislators. So, what they're asking for, okay, the current salary is nineteen thousand each.
Correct.
But we need to add it to make it twenty five hundred. No.
Well, let's.
No. Yeah, what they're asking for is twenty thousand five hundred.
Yeah, so they currently get nineteen thousand each and a five hundred dollar stipend for canvassing. So they really get nineteen thousand five hundred. What they're asking is to move the stipend into their salary line. So just spread out throughout the year, then on the file something separate for it. And so they go from the nineteen to five hundred, so really nineteen five currently to twenty five, twenty thousand five hundred, so an additional thousand dollars. But technically, the motion has to be to increase their salaries to twenty thousand five hundred.
Right.
Including the stipend for canvassing.
I understand. Are there any, uh, I will make a motion. Do you want to make a motion?
I would make a motion to make each of their salaries twenty thousand five hundred and that's including the stipend starting June, uh, July first.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay. Let's discuss. I think I'm fine with that.
Where does this stipend come from, Brad? From another pot of money?
It's in the registrar's account already. It just, it's part of their.
They just don't want to have to, uh, ask for a separate, file for separately, right?
Yeah. So they have this, they're paid for, you get paid for it. So if you increase their salaries and include it, it just set in there. And then when they, they get paid monthly, so they'll get one twelfth of it a month instead of one twelfth of the nineteen thousand and then once a year, they gotta file for the five hundred.
Why was it set up that way originally?
It's, I think it was the state statute that they get paid for the canvassing. So they would still be getting paid for the canvassing. It would just be, it's more of an operational thing. You pay it throughout the year without them having to file. For our department, it's easier because it's like, you know, but.
You put a separate line with W or there?
No, it just, it's, they get paid additionally when there's uh, elections because they're the election moderator, they get an amount of money, but that's filed per election. So all that rolls into one W two.
I, I guess what I'm saying is just, like, listen, we're making history here, right? So in ten years from now, when somebody looks at the catchings, so then you get paid for canvassing. Is it, is it identified somewhere in your pay that this five hundred dollars is your mark towards that?
We could, we had to set it up that way. But, yeah.
Is that something we, we just do by instruction and say?
But yeah, it's the motion was to include the canvassing.
Stipend.
Yeah.
Right. That was part of the motion. It'd be in the minutes.
And is there a change to, like, retirement?
There is no retirement. It's viewed as a part of. And it's not, the canvassing isn't a reimbursement. It's always been a taxable income, so.
Okay. Are we discussing, we're gonna move to question? Okay. All those in favor of setting the registrar voter's salary at twenty thousand five hundred dollars, which will include their canvassing stipend, please signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Okay, we went through that. Let's, um, I know, you know what? I'm just, let's make a motion to discuss this, but I have something that, you know, is probably so if you want to make a motion to discuss.
Would you like me to make that?
Yes.
Uh, make a motion that we discuss the organizational chart. I have seconded.
I'll second it. So here's the thing, Marty's not here, but he, they have weighed in, Marty wrote something, uh, Matt wrote something. I included, um, this thing that I found, uh, handbook for Connecticut's for finances is put out by, um, University of Connecticut. And on page four, there's a highlighted area that, that, you know, speaks to, um, more of the intricacies of responsibility to the boards of finance. Here, here's what I'm thinking. There's nothing that we can decide here that's going to mean anything. So Marty's weighed in, Matt's weighed in. So we need to figure out how important this is. I believe it's important. The only thing that I think that could happen is to, if we don't agree with what they say, with what Matt and Marty say, that we have like what they call a friendly something, get a declaratory ruling. Because we cannot make these decisions here. We can't vote on anything here. So I think that's something to think about. You know what I mean? Because this is not going to change based on the information we have now and the positions that are being outlined in the communication. So let's discuss where we want to go and how we want to get there.
I'd refer to Bob, he's very.
Yes, we're looking at Bob.
But I, I agree. I, I think this is important. I thought when we left it last time was that, because it's, I think in the end, it's, it's, it's Brad's kind of area. But what I thought how we left it was we'll work on something that this board, the comptroller, the board of selectmen, or at least the first select can agree to for purposes of the fiscal year twenty two financial statements.
Yeah, so my feeling on it is, oh, sorry, you looked at me.
So I think I'm agreeing. So I think I'm agreeing with what you're saying is, it's, again, we believe it's important. We'll figure something out that makes sense. And we're already, and you'll tell us right during the comptroller's report, we're already seventy-five percent through the current year.
Right, this would be, yeah, this would be future.
I thought we left it off with that agreement, but I thought Matt said absolutely not.
Yeah.
He was not having that.
So that's not.
So we really weren't there.
No, no, we were, we were at a dotted line, and then there was no line, so that's the way I remember it, so.
I think the first selectman stance was he wasn't changing it, right? So I think technically, there's, we can make any argument, and now we're going down a rabbit hole. I think technically it's my report. Whether or not it's the board of finance, his job to produce the report. Um, the report itself does say prepared by the comptroller. So my feeling on it, unless we could put together a comprehensive org chart that'll show all the intricacies, I think we pull it from the financial statements until that time. And is, I don't know what the mechanism is to create that, whether somebody needs to create it and bring it to the board of selectmen to vote on it. That's where it gets messy. My feeling is, why should we leave something in that's controversial? And I will one hundred percent say it does not tell the whole story. Why I changed it is because during the hiring process, it seemed pretty clear that the be-all, end-all is the board of selectmen. And if the org chart's gonna have one line, and that's where we got into the dotted line and all that. It should be the board of selectmen, and we can argue that all day long, but, you know, like, I personally, I understand there's a relationship between the comptroller and the board of selectmen, between the comptroller and the board of finance, between the comptroller and the PUC. Which isn't in the org chart at all.
The hot button is that, like what you pointed out, it's a checks and balances thing. It's a thing that, um, philosophically. It doesn't, it doesn't make sense, and I think the inflammatory thing was taking that out, you know, moving that for kind of no reason.
Well, the reason was going through the hiring process. No, I changed, but it was after many conversations.
You just changed the chart, correct?
Yes.
Obviously. So is this more of like a charter revision discussion than necessarily?
No, because this never saw the chart. This never is part of it. It's really, it's funny because, well, Mr. Nick, I'm gonna tell you. Right, I'm gonna tell you where it came from, where, where Matt's.
Chart should have came from the document. The chart should have been.
Nothing came from anything. It was just made, and it was there for years. And what happened, here's where I get clogged up, is on the one hand, Mr. Nick, who's not here, so we'll discuss it when he is here. Says it's no big deal, but then on the other hand, he refuses to change it back, so.
But it should, is, I, I mean, I'm just, I, I'm just asking a question because maybe I'm confused. We need to follow the charter, not, the chart is like, it's like a, it's like a financial, if you look at a financial report and you make a chart off of the numbers, you made the chart off of the numbers. So isn't this the same thing? You made a chart off of the charter document. And so, I don't know, that's why I'm confused as to the char, I mean, the chart, the charter is the charter. We need to follow the charter.
Yeah, the charter rules the day.
And if, if, if we want to change, the charter rules the day, so if, if it's a matter of that, that we want to look at the charter to be changed as to how, who, how it reports, so that there is a bigger checks and balance, I'm thinking that that's a charter revision discussion.
But this is, this is a, literally, this is a chart discussion.
It's not charter.
Because the charter's the charter, right? And they made the chart as what was believed to be a reflection of the charter relationship.
Right.
And the relationship is a little confusing between who has more authority in different ways over the comptroller, right?
Right.
Now, the charter's the charter.
Right.
The problem with the chart, though, is if you have a chart like that, that kind of implies it's different. Then it almost becomes different over time because people aren't reading the charter.
Right.
They're reading the chart.
Right.
So I think that's where this is important to look at it from, you know, Mr. Manfred's perspective is like when we brought this up. It's like the chart should be as accurate as possible.
Right, I don't disagree, I don't disagree.
We just have to decide what to do about the chart.
Or keep the chart or change the chart.
Yeah, the charter's like, is possibility, it's just the chart. We keep the chart, we change the chart.
Well, that was my sense of, I think at this point, we pull it until one is created that everybody can agree on. What the mechanism is to force, or who gets to decide what the org chart should look like, that's a discussion for another day. But when it comes to what the org chart, the current situation with the org chart is, my feeling is we pull it because you could, I, I understand Bob Manfred's point, that it's inaccurate. I think he understands my point, that I feel like the other way it's inaccurate.
Sure.
And I think both statements are correct. So until you have one that's accurate.
I'm sorry, who makes that decision? That's the thing, is that you that makes the decision? Is it the board of selectmen that makes?
As by the charter, the report is, is commissioned by the board of finance.
Exactly.
Correct, but the annual report is prepared by the comptroller.
At the direction, it says that in the charter.
So hence we have an issue.
I, again, I think what makes sense is what Brad just said, which is, let's figure out what we think works. Bobby Joe, I would say, just after what's already said, the chart is not the governing document. But it is a document that is meant to summarize the, the charter and, and as important.
The relationships.
The relationships and behaviors. And I, I can tell you, as a finance person, this is how I saw it originally, right? One of the very first things I look at when I get the two hundred page annual report is the org chart. Because that provides a simple overview of how the whole organization is understood to work. So, and I think we were all saying this, right? It's not, the governing document is the charter. But the chart, which is part of the financial statements, is important in that it is the summary of how people understand the charter to work practically.
Right.
And the, and the various relationships. So I, I think we can get to where we need to be.
Yeah.
I, I believe we should have some form of that chart in the financials. It's been there forever.
Yeah.
Right, we've had pre, pre, preview, I've had discussions with a lot of previous board of finance chairs going back to the charter revision, and my understanding is in history, is that that chart was looked at, was understood. I had those conversations with Bob Kozlowski during, like, my four years and more recently. So we'll come up with some chart, and I think that works.
Yeah.
And is that something that we can do here? If that's.
We can do that, um, you know, perhaps a subcommittee is in order.
So do you and I.
That's funny.
Because I, I do think, just one more point on it, like if you look at the org chart, and this wasn't changed, is it? It doesn't show any relationship between the chief of police and the police commission. It doesn't show.
We can't fight all their battles.
You know, like, but like, it's not a nuanced chart. So the current version of it.
Though I would argue, right, Brad, and I know we didn't want to get into deep discussion here. I don't know that the chief of, that the police force has the same governing agencies that finance. We've got the FAS, oh, Financial Accounting Standards, we got GAZB, the Government Accounting Standards. GAAP, gas, all that stuff, that is not, I don't think there's an equivalent of that for the police. So I think that might not be the best analogy that we're trying to make.
Yeah, I understand. It's not a perfect analogy, but it is, it, it, I'm just saying the chart's very basic. So, and one of the things that, when we started this discussion, it's almost like the board of, the comptroller goes to the board of finance, the board of finance goes to the board of selectmen. The problem with that is the board of finance doesn't report to the board of selectmen. So how do you show that in a chart? Without messing up that relationship, because the board of selectmen don't oversee the board of finance.
I'm sorry, but the, but the charter does specifically say that the board of finance could number one task the comptroller to do things.
Yeah.
It also not, it's, it's basically, um, I don't see the hiring, the first selectman can hire, but the board of finance has to say, okay. And the, the first man can't fire without the board of selectmen.
There's one hundred percent of relationship.
And it's, but it's also a different level of relationship in the town. Right, it's, it's, the board of finance arguably one of the most important boards in the town. So I think, yeah, you can't represent every dotted relationship, like maybe the agencies, but to certainly the board of finance, you probably should. So I think to, to, in this point, we, we should look at that, that's all down the line. We should come up with something.
I think what we did when we did the hiring subcommittee, uh, let's, you and I talk about it, and we'll figure out something, and we'll table this until we figure out a subcommittee. Yeah, let's get through these murky woods.
My ideal is the board of finance and the board of selectmen agree what the chart should be, and we'll change the chart and we'll be done with it. I would love to never talk about this chart ever again.
Brad, when you say pull it, are you talking about the file cabinet up in the state?
No, I'm saying for future reports, we don't need to have an org chart in there.
But it is in there right now.
It is in there now. So if the board of finance and board of selectmen can't agree, instead of creating this, and I understand your point that it's important to be in there. I think we should have an accurate in there, so I think if we could get the boards to agree before December thirty-first. Because that's really when we need it by, before we file at the end of the year.
Okay, so. I would like to amend the motion, or I don't even have to, because it was just a discussion. That we have decided to there will be a subcommittee formed, and we will table this issue until such time as that subcommittee is formed and has decided something to present. Is that a motion beyond?
So basically, you're just making.
Let's just die, let's just kill it. I just thought we have to vote on tabling. I don't know, maybe I'm wrong. You just have to take it off. No, but it's a special meeting. That's, I don't think I can take things.
If you don't vote on a motion, you don't vote on anything.
Well, I know there's a motion that, that Nick would want to make about now. Oh, we got that, we're going more, don't we?
I don't know, we have one more thing, we have one more thing. Whatever happens to that, we're gonna figure it out later. Let's go to, you know, Brad's turn to regale us. Make a motion to, hold on, a motion to accept the public order.
Um, before he talks about it, I guess. I make a motion to, to accept Brad's. No, I want him to talk about it first, and then I'll make the motion to accept it, like I always do.
Yeah.
Brad, you like to speak about?
Yes, I would love to speak about this. Numbers are so exciting. So looking at the financials, um, I'll start with the collection rate. Last year at this time, we were at eighty-two point one nine, we're at eighty-two point one seven, we're right where we are. Last year was one of the best collection years we've ever had, if not the best, so being right point oh two away percentage-wise. Um, we're in a good spot with collections. Um, expense-wise, we're looking pretty good. The only thing that concerns me expense-wise is our utilities. Our contract ended for natural gas in January. The market was really high in January, so we didn't renew. Then Russia invaded Ukraine, and utility charges have gone through the roof, so we still haven't renewed. So we're paying spot, um, or market rate. We're still, we look at it every week. Um, we don't want to lock in long-term at a really high rate. So we're getting past hopefully the heating season, even those thirty degrees this morning. So that may be an issue. We're gonna hope that if that utility is overrun, that we will have chances to make it up elsewhere. So that's the only thing that concerns me right now is utilities. And it's unfortunate is the timing, usually January traditionally has been a really good time for us to lock in. Our, uh, gas, diesel, and natural, and, sorry, unleaded gasoline and natural gas. It was not a good year right after that. The flip side of that is our electrics locked in for another like thirty-six months, and electrics going through the roof right now. So i- you know, when you lock in, there's things like this. We're trying to, you know, we locked in our electric for five years, but we got a good rate. Um, and that's paying off for us right now. Um, the natural gas is biting us right now.
Bradley, the numbers here for the year-to-date spend. When, does that include an accrual through March thirty-first?
Um, it does not, because we held one of the payments, because we were trying to negotiate with them. So we had a hundred and sixty thousand dollar payment that we made after this. Um, so where we are right now, so as of April eighteenth, um, we spent eighty-nine thousand, eighty, sorry, eighty-nine percent of our utility account for the year. In just the utility line of the five-three-two-one. There's probably gonna be some other bigger natural gas bills, but hopefully we get more weeks like last week and last weeks, like the beginning of this week, and our natural gas will come now.
When does the, you said you locked in electricity for five years?
Yeah.
When is that?
In three to three and a half more years.
Okay.
So again, the problem with that is when that comes to, what we'll probably do with that, because we usually run our electric out longer. Um, when we're like a year out from that, we'll look to extend, just so you could blend it a little bit more. So you don't take big jumps, but, you know, the flip side with the electric, with more solar coming onboard on top of the schools and stuff, that should drive some of that down to.
So the, the March thirty-first.
Yeah. There are some allocations out of this account at year-end to public utilities. So the, let me just explain this. So the electric bills and fuel oil and stuff that come in specific for a building. Those, and if it's for the pump station on Long Ridge, it gets charged to utilities right away. Um, the Big Am Rascal project that we pay four to five hundred thousand dollars a year is allocated at year-end. Um, because that project was the whole town, the percentage that PUC pays towards that, it gets allocated at year.
So does that mean there's not enough in this account to get free guns?
It depends what happens over the next three months, you know, like.
Right.
Yeah, and right now, I expect we're gonna overrun it, but there are other, other accounts that I don't think we are gonna overrun. Because of this accountant, stuff that was up in the air with ADP. I have a position vacant in my office that I need to fill. I'm not filling it right now, because I have this hole. You know, like, there are things that we're doing. We're trying not, we're only buying the bare minimum hole. We need to run our trucks right now for gasoline and diesel. You know, because we're trying to get, use our supplies now to get us to a point that we can lock in lower. And then buy that rig. Um, we're looking at combining some of our resources with the schools on some of our buying power for that, because they buy all the fuel for their buses. Which is diesel. So we're looking at it, where, you know.
That's always a great idea, in my opinion, to combine.
Yeah.
Purchases like that, so.
Just one more point on that, like, when the schools redid their bus contract, some of their buses now are gasoline instead of diesel. So one of the things that the board of that asked me about, and I agreed to, is we'll just buy, order more when we do our new contract. Gasoline, and the, those buses, I think it's their, the shorter buses. Um, will fill at the public works garage, because otherwise the schools would have to pay to put a gasoline um, tank in at the bus depot, and that seems ridiculous. You know, like, we do try to share resources.
That's great. I've always been a fan of that. Sure, that's great. Excellent. Have any more questions or comments for Brad?
I'd make a motion to accept Brad's.
Oh, sorry, can I ask one question? I'm sorry, Brad, so the use of money and property, is that our amendment?
Yeah, yeah. We do have the right that if we need to at the year-end, we can pull in our footprints for it. Um, I'm hoping the collection rate stays higher, then, and that'll make up the revenue shortfall. And then we could use the ARPA funds for capital projects instead of having to just pull it in for lost revenue. But we do have that ability to fill that hole, and that's why we kept it at the four hundred and eighty thousand. And if you remember last budget season when the mill rate was set, we increased the revenue by, I think it was two hundred thousand. Because we could use the ARPA funds, and it kept the mill rate lower by point one mills.
Brad, there was one more question. Brad, there was one more question. We approved four hundred thousand for.
I was just gonna say that.
And we had asked if it can come out of the heart with the the COVID money. And you know, we got wishy-washy, warm response from you and and Nick.
No, I thought we got a commitment to look into it.
Look into it.
Yeah.
Like clearly, if if a splash park would be approved, radios would be.
Oh, come on, look, we're, we're almost through.
The ARPA funds, right now we're still looking at pricing out the front hall and the locker rooms. So the problem with it, they need the radios, like I think they're ordered, we haven't paid for them yet.
Should be here.
But that's still fine. You can still.
I know, but we do, there's a second allotment coming that we could use for it at some point. We will look at it.
Okay, so with the two point nine, how much is the locker rooms or or the restrooms out front?
Um.
A million or something?
Yeah. He he right now, the front hall's like four sixty, four seventy.
So you still got two million?
Yeah.
Okay, so why can't we just pay for the radios now?
You need, the ARPA committee hasn't committed to that. It's been brought up and they haven't.
And who's on that committee?
Um there's seven of us.
There's seven?
I believe so, yes.
Who?
And who?
Uh myself, it's Janice Christiane, it's Matt Nickerbacher, Eileen Earl, Nick Cataldo. Um and then Eric Swenson. Might be another one I'm missing.
So do they, I think the police radios are important.
So the IT.
They are, they are approved to be bought by the town. So it's not a matter of whether or not they get them, it's just where the funding.
Right, and that was our.
That was our discussion about.
And we, that's what we discussed and and did get a commitment to look into it. So when you say it was brought up. I thought it would be brought up in the in the idea of making the application or whatever, you have to have eligibility for ARPA to look into if it's even eligible. But you're saying now it has to go through a committee. Who are the the three more people on the committee?
Uh I don't know.
Janice, Matt, Nick, Eric.
Uh Galliford is not on that. Eileen Earl.
Okay.
I saw Lisa Plum, the senior.
Okay.
So what would be an example?
I just want to get the one more name.
So myself, Matt, Janice, Eileen Earl, Lisa Plum, Nick Cataldo, Eric Swenson.
Yeah, that's.
That's seven.
One, two, three, four, five. Yeah, all right, thanks.
So what would be an example that the the committee thought it was more important to buy opposed to the radios for the volunteer fire department?
It's not necessarily, so the board of finance has approved the purchase of the radio, so it's not whether or not they're gonna get the radios.
We know that.
We know that.
You know, I think it's, one of the things that the ARPA committee has talked about is things that affect the whole town. I know public safety is important and it does, but it's for one department. Um so you know, there's.
For both departments.
Yeah, sorry, the fire departments as a whole.
Yeah.
Right.
It covers the whole town.
Safety, like like ambulances and fires. Look, we we had this, it was very fulsome discussion. We had it. It when there was a commitment to look into it and now it does seem a little lukewarm, honestly. So you know, you have a committee and all we wanted to know was that it would be looked into. You know, sincerely looked into and not just the.
Yeah, but you, so the committee is also, fire department says all the time, oh, we should buy a fire truck from it. We should, public utility says you can use it for sewer upgrades, you know, like.
We would have, I know, but we wouldn't have had this conversation if we. Didn't feel that this particular thing, we're not lobbying for a fire truck. We have this conversation.
It 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 was brought up and they didn't feel like they wanted to use the money for stuff that.
So if, so if they're a meeting, if they're a meeting.
Yeah.
They would think, say, a fire truck is less important than a splash park?
It's not so much a less important, but.
That's on the list.
Park.
Let me ask you a question. Are there minutes that come with that meeting?
No, it's a material meeting.
I trust another meeting.
And then it's brought to the board of select.
How do we know when it's happening? We don't. It's not.
Yeah, when.
They've been meeting as needed.
Right, so it's not a trackable meeting.
No.
No, there's a, it's an inside meeting. So we can't find out unless we ask every day.
I see other towns and and they all have referendums or or advisory questions of what to do with the COVID money. And it seems like this Bethel, that six million dollars is all in the dark.
I'm not.
It all goes through the board of select.
I'm just saying, this, this is.
Rich, would you say a ladder truck is more important than a splash park?
Yeah, you have the small businesses, the small businesses, three hundred fifty thousand, you approved some other stuff. Now we're off topic, but.
I don't need to.
It's not, it's not six million just for the town. The town.
Yes, it is. Two different payments.
Yeah, it's like five point eight.
Five point eight now.
That's just the town side, yes.
That's not the school.
School, not.
I just want to ask, who did, is this something that was an appointed, appointed committee?
Yes, by the first look.
Okay, so I'm just gonna go on record as saying I find it somewhat, I'm not gonna say alarming, but troubling. That this is an appointed committee that needs outside of the public. Not that maybe the public could go, but there's no minutes, there's no agenda, there's no anything that ties it to the public in any way.
One of the things we did talk about, because you keep bringing up the splashback.
No, no, I want to talk about the the structure of what.
I know, but I think we're off the control of the report, though.
Well.
You want to have a discussion about the.
I guess so. Well, I I will follow up on that. Let's go ahead, yeah.
One more question on the comptroller report.
Yeah, absolutely. I, you're right, I got sidetracked.
This was included.
I don't know why that was.
No, you're right. I got sidetracked and point of order on me.
And Brad doesn't run that group.
I am the chairman of the, but I'm one of seven. And mostly to make sure, like I have to by the end of the month file the.
Okay, we'll, we'll talk about.
Possible uses of it.
Well, we are off topic, so I will follow up on that myself. And the comptroller report, is there anything more that we're talking about with this comptroller report? Okay, let's make a question. All those in favor of accepting the comptrollers report, please signify by saying I, I oppose. Is there a motion to adjourn? You like to do that.
I'm not making a motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion. Second. All in favor? I did.